Davy McNelly with the Athens Disability Commission. I'm going to go and call the meeting to order. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. It's been a really beautiful day out. I've been outside doing. I've been on vacation this week, so it's just me and the kids trying to do some fun things. So it's been good.
You look relaxed, David.
Thank you. Thank you. I've been trying. Yeah, so I just wanted to check in and see how everyone's doing to start off the meeting. If there's any needs around, you know, just around our personal experience, around physical distancing, or any other needs that we may have and ways that we can address them. So yeah, if we could just have everyone just kind of go through and say hi. And maybe just see how you're doing again. I can start off. My name is Davy McNelly. I'm the Chair of the Disability Commission. I work for the Athens County Board of DD. And I guess I already said it, it's been an okay week and an otherwise very difficult time for the world and our nation and everything else. But hopefully, some good things can come of it. I'm going to go and point over to Barry now. You want to go ahead and introduce yourself, Barry?
Sure, I'm Barry Dilly. And I'm getting tired of being isolated, I must say. But I do get out and go for walks and keep my six-foot distance. And at that time, I don't wear my mask because it's too hard to breathe. But when I get any closer to people, then I either cross the street or I wear a mask where I need to. But I keep thinking, how long do I want to live in this way of life? Because, you know, let's face it, this could go on for some time. And how to make it work? Being cautious, careful, but not going nutty.
Yeah, it is a hard thing right now. Anything that we can do to support Barry?
Well, I talk to her on the phone all the time.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just going to be hard. I think everybody, you know, we change our whole lifestyles.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's go over to Rose.
Okay, well, you're going to laugh. But well, the good news in my house is they just finished renovating the deck and it is finished today. And all the new flowers are planted, et cetera. So it's really beautiful.
It's outside now.
Yeah, right. Well, unfortunately, I have to figure out. Because I hold on to things, I'm going to have to get someone to arrange the furniture so that I can have something to touch and hold on to when I walk. But it's a small, minor thing. And what I want to share is that I've been disabled now, forget this, 30 years since my car accident. Like last month was 30 years. And I've been pretty socially isolated, you know, talking on the phone and being on the computer and visiting with friends, not that much. And so this isolation is not an awful thing for me because it's very similar to my life forever, right?
She's trying to...
Yeah, that's interesting that you say that, Rose, and just, you know, how maybe it's not as much of a change.
It really isn't. Well, you know, right, because I, I mean, I mean, obviously, I do have my husband and children before they moved away as adults. But still, I've been pretty self-sufficient in terms of reading or talking on the phone incessantly. And so it's not much different than it was before.
In a cage, he's playing Jeopardy with me.
Right, playing Jeopardy. Every day, I play Jeopardy on the phone. Yes, indeed.
I've been playing Words with Friends. Carolyn, do you care to introduce yourself and just talk a little bit about how you're doing?
Yes, today was a great day. You know, I haven't seen, we haven't seen our family members since March. So the Laurel's planned a parade today where the families could have signs and decorate their cars and go around as much as they want to. And we could be outside. And the Laurel's made signs for us to say, "We miss you, we love you," and all those kinds of things. And then for those that could, they could get out of their car. We get six feet away and talk with us. So just spoke with my daughter. It was emotional. You know, Karen doesn't cry much, but she had a couple of tears in her eyes. We just did virtual hugs. But it was, it was really, it's better than looking out the window and having to wave. So it was a nice thing that they did. There were probably about 50 residents and I would imagine about 20 25 cars that went around. They could go around as many times as they could. Several went around about four times, but it's a good day.
Like there with the parade, right?
Parade, yes, like the, like the Passion Works Parade in place.
So Carolyn, your facility has avoided any COVID cases, I take it?
Yes, and they've been so cautious. Even when people go out, they come back into a hall, the 900 Hall that's the apartments. They stayed there 14 for 14 days. That's completely closed off and the staff who work back there have to go in a separate door. Temperatures and all, they're taking feet white donut. And then after they're there for 14 days, they go to another hall that's closed off for 14 days. And then they can get into the general accommodation.
My aunt died of COVID in a nursing home up in the Toledo area. And it was, it was very sad because her children weren't able to see her for like two months. And they finally agreed when they knew that she was on her deathbed to allow them to visit with her. And by that point, I guess they didn't feel like she even knew that they were there.
Wow.
Starved.
Condolences to Scott. Yeah, it's such a hard time right now. Yeah, Scott, you're actually next on the list. How are you doing personally? How's everything going?
Well, I'm tired of wearing a mask. I, you know, I kind of feel like Barry, like I'd like to be somewhere where you don't have to do that. You know, I, for a while, I resisted, you know? And then it just, I started to feel like a bit of a pariah if I would go somewhere and not wear one, you know? Because I mean, as it became, originally, people thought you were trying to protect yourself, you know, very early on. And then it became whether an understanding that you were really trying to protect the people around you. And I just hate it, you know? I mean, I drive a lot for work and it's incredibly uncomfortable. I, my glasses steam up. It's not safe, you know? So I have a choice. Do I? Well, I don't have a choice. I take my glasses on and off, you know, as I need to. If I'm driving in direct sunlight, I put my glasses on and put up with the, you know, the fogging. And you know, I noticed too that a lot of my senses are as good when I'm wearing a mask.
Yeah, same here, same here.
Yeah, driving, it's just, you know. I was in Kroger's and I, you know, I was bagging my own stuff and I left something on the checkout line. I didn't see it, which normally would not be the case. So yeah, there's, I think that if I was of retirement age, I would probably go to a country where I don't have to wear a mask. I mean, if this was going to go on.
Correct.
But I was excited. One of the other things that's been very difficult on me is I work out a few days a week. And the community center's been closed, finally open Monday. And, and you know, it wasn't nearly as bad as I thought it was going to be. I was thinking, boy, is this going to be so encumbering that I won't even want to go there? But they made it pretty good, you know? You have to clean the machines before and after. But nobody was wearing a mask, which surprised me, you know? And it's, for me, that felt really liberating, you know? Because I didn't have to feel like I was a pariah when I was wearing one. And you know, I, you know, I just, you know, I mean, I'm somewhat at high risk in that I have a blood clotting disorder. But nonetheless, I, you know, I just really don't think that me wearing a mask is going to save me. And I take my temperature multiple times a day as part of my employment and, you know, never have a fever. If I had a fever, it would be different. I, you know, I would self-isolate. But I won't go on too long. But to me, yeah, that's really been the worst of it is not seeing all the people I'm used to seeing and having to wear a mask.
You wear a mask when you're driving? I wouldn't think you'd have to then.
Well, I'm transporting people.
Oh.
And so, see, that's really throwing...
Oh, yeah, you mean you have to, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's been really disrupted our business model at the agency too because we're only allowed to transport one individual at a time.
Right.
Yeah, it's really finding new and different ways of doing things. Because like you said, mask-wearing is so important in order to not spread infection and really works. But it is personally difficult a lot of the time. And I realize we're running a little over in terms of how much time we get allocated for check-ins. So maybe we could just go through kind of quick with everyone who's left, which is about half of us. And again, thanks, everyone, for joining. We have a good group here tonight. Diane, do you want to go and introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Diane Vea. And I work at the university in the Office for University Accessibility. And I've been involved with the City Commission for a while. And I serve on the Accessibility Committee. And I'm doing pretty well overall, I would say. I do, I sympathize. I'm more of the place if I, people are around and come home. Yeah, so who else is next?
Let's go to Arianne next.
Hi, everyone. Arianne Smedley. I am with City Council. I represent Board One, which is the west side of Athens. I also work with Athens County Board of DD. I'm doing just fine, relatively speaking. I'm grateful for my job and that I have a home to be in during this time. I'm kind of an introvert as it is, so I'm doing all right with the isolation. But I do, I do miss my coworkers, so I'm looking forward to getting back to work. The County Board of DD did postpone their reopening. They were initially thinking of reopening, a sort of soft or partial reopening in July. But in an effort to be extra cautious, we postponed that to August 3rd.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, Arianne. Let's go over to Sly. Sly, could you introduce yourself?
Or thing, excuse me, good evening, everybody. Sly Motta. I'm the Assistant Director of Diversity and Inclusion for the College of Business. And honestly, I'm doing well. I miss my family in Arizona, so I'm waiting for some of these restrictions to be relieved a little bit. So Arizona, unfortunately, is spiking in cases due to a lot of the protesting that has been happening and ongoing. But once some of the cases start to, you know, go down, hoping to get out of town and go see my nieces and see my mom for a bit.
Okay. Thank you, Sly. Let's go up to Noah. Oh, wait.
I'm okay. Today was so beautiful. I had to go for a walk. I'm sick of these virtual meetings.
Me too. I have so many virtual meetings. Let's go over to JW.
Hey, I'm doing good. And I'll keep it really brief. I think I'd call myself, you know, Mr. Open Up. Everything, soon as something opens up, I'm out. I mean, I was first guy in the chair when they opened up haircuts. Everything that opens up, I'm there, buddy. So I've been getting out as much as I can, wearing my mask. Don't like it, but I hear you, Scott. Just go with the flow. But I'm loving it.
JW, you using Athens on Demand?
Yeah, they don't charge a dime to either. That's even better. I just jump on and go all over the world.
Yes, okay.
I'm not taking any money.
That's great. I didn't know that.
Are they, are they free now? Is that what's happening?
No, they're just not trying to touch money, you know? And so...
Oh, right.
So they're not trying to exchange dollars and stuff, so it's like, fine with me.
Really?
I'm glad the stores aren't like that.
Yeah, right.
Good idea.
And then Samora, do you care to introduce yourself?
Sure. Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Samora Dower and I currently work for Hopewell Health Centers. I serve in clinical mental health and rehabilitation counseling. I actually work with Nelsonville York Elementary. So for a couple of months, we were a little bit worried about the direction of how schools were going to go. However, we have managed to do very well. And Hopewell is doing an outstanding job with telehealth therapy and replace of meeting clients in person. And just to wrap things up, I have, thanks to a generous donation, we have made so many masks that all of my clients and so many other clients in the agency has been able to utilize all of these masks. And we have so many extras. So if anyone on the Disability Committee would need a mask, please let me know and I'll be more than welcome to get those delivered to you.
Eric, that's great. Thank you so much, Samora. That's, yeah, that's good news. I think so sometimes people struggle with where to get masks. So we'll make sure to add that to our, to our meeting minutes. And maybe even if Hopewell shared something on social media, we could push that out as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. And then the last person who's joining us, who will be coming up for full commission vote, is Claire. Claire, do you want to introduce yourself? And also, I was thinking, since you'll probably, we're going to kind of push that back to the back of the meeting, if you wanted to talk a little bit about HAPCAP's rental and mortgage help right now?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, yeah, but my name is Clark Isagum and I am the Public Relations Manager for Talking Athens Perry Community Action, also known as HAPCAP. And I'm doing fine. I ordered a new mattress. I've been sleeping on a broken bed for three years. So I'm just, I'm like, it feels like Christmas and my birthday and just everything all rolled up into one. So I'm very excited because I don't think I've gotten a full night's sleep in three years. But like the biggest news. But, but yeah, so for, I mean, for HAPCAP, we've, we've made adjustments to all of our programs, basically. And the biggest, the biggest update that we have as an agency is we've received some funding from the state to offer assistance for rent and mortgage payments. And as of right now, those, you have to fall within certain income guidelines. But for Athens County, I mean, if your income has been affected by COVID-19, if you received reduced hours, if you're, you know, if you're under pressure by your landlord to make rent, just check out this program. We have all the information available on our website, hapcap.org. And it's under MNC Housing Assistance. And I'm just, I'm going to be honest with you. The response to this program has been a little slow for, you know, for the time being. I don't know if it's because the word hasn't really gotten out how we expected it to or, or, you know, maybe the stimulus payments were able to tide people over. But, but yeah, yeah, we were, we were a little surprised. But it has picked up in like the last, I'd say, week or so. So yeah, if you know anyone who would benefit from this program, please point them to our website or they can call. They can call the HAPCAP office or our authorization office and they'll be able to chat with someone, so.
You got, okay.
Real quickly, I just wanted to, I just wanted to real quickly say, I know that there's been a lot of support and a lot of different opportunities for individuals to take advantage of some of the program like you've spoken of. I know the credit union was received a grant or so to help funds as well. But, you know, I also sit on the Mountain Zion Preservation Committee as well. And what I hear from a lot of community members is because of how long the stimulus checks took to be received by some, they just became mentally and emotionally checked out, unfortunately. And there's been a lot of negative feedback within Athens of getting housing support or housing allowance or being able to defer rent for a month, which then took its toll mentally and emotionally on a lot of people. So I'm very happy to hear about what you're speaking of. And then I know a lot of individuals are going to look at it and say, what hoops I need to jump through or how am I going to be let down? So anything I can do to help support or spread the word, definitely let us as a body know, but definitely let me know as well.
George, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And you're, you're exactly right. I mean, I don't know if anyone else here, for a while, and the biggest, the biggest hurdle, I think, was food access and people were really panicking about. And we are lucky as a county to have so many resources. But I swear, for those first like three weeks, it also felt like a little bit of a curse because there was just so much. And just being, I mean, I'm so fortunate, you know, and privileged in my life to never have to worry about where my next meal is coming from. But to, you know, have to sift through and have all of these conversations and everything, it was very like mentally draining. So to be on the other side of that, yeah, absolutely. I can't imagine how tough that is. So, so yeah, I completely understand.
Have you, I wanted to ask a question. Have you, have you had a lot of success in getting like the A News and the Messenger to write stories about the availability?
Yeah, yeah, we, we have, we sent a press release and we've been posting it to our social media. And we have a really good relationship with Connor Morris, but I haven't spoken to the new news editor yet. But I think her name is Sydney, so I'll need to introduce myself.
Yeah, one way to reach, what about, what about W O U B? Like Dave Palmer, or not Dave, W A T H. He loves to make announcements. I shouldn't say that, but it's true, right?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock every morning.
And sorry, sorry, everyone, just so that we're able to get to the rest of the agenda. Claire, if you'd be able to just maybe send out some information to everyone?
That'd be great.
Then I think even as like a communication committee, it might be, you know, something that could be discussed about how to get that word out. I know as an agency and, you know, we represent a lot of different agencies and support groups. Here, we could really try and push it out. I know the Athens County Board, we've had, I've had conversations with three or four individuals in the last week about it, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah, anything I can do, just email me, right?
Absolutely. Thank you. So the next thing on the agenda is to approve last month's minutes.
We're moved.
Any discussion before we?
A second, a second.
Thank you.
Okay. JW?
I moved, yes.
You were first?
I moved, yes.
You moved and who was second? I missed it.
Carolyn.
Kim. Carolyn did?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's hard to catch that sometimes. You guys are quick.
Any discussion before we move to vote? Okay, all in favor? Let's, aye and raise hands. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Carolyn, if you'd like to lead us into the treasurer's report?
We sent out the treasurer's report, operating budget still a balance of a thousand and a thousand 600 in the sign language services. And that's the treasurer's report.
All right, thank you. And I think I was told last time that we should make it more official so that we can... Here, my kid's giving me a book. Thank you, Louisa.
I'll move that one too, JW.
All right, we have the motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any intentions? Any nays? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Carolyn.
You're welcome.
All right. We're going to move into...
Whoa, what happened? Hello?
I already talked about the first item in new business with, which is... Am I back?
Davy, yes.
Yeah, you're fading it out.
Okay.
Rose, right.
Okay, am I okay or does someone want to continue? Okay, so I think we already talked about community need possible ways to address and our introductions that kind of blended together. Is there any other things that we are completely missing right now that we could potentially be helpful with? I saw a chat from Noah. We should put the link on Facebook. Yeah, that's definitely true. We can continue to use our social media presence to permit things. And yeah, I think there's a lot of really good options out there in terms of, you know, assistance for people. And thank you, Claire. There we are. Yeah, just ways for people to help get connected to those services who maybe aren't on social media or who don't have access to like the newspapers. What do you say, Samora?
Oh, yeah, Davy, I was just going to bring up a really quick point. In the advocacy meeting yesterday, I just wanted to make a suggestion to bringing up that when I, I visited the Athens Community Center's new pool structure. And I think I was with Carolyn after one of our disabilities meetings and I realized that they do not have a handicap bathroom accessibility there. So perhaps with everything being down with COVID-19, maybe we can look into them getting those accessible.
Okay, yeah, we will take a look at that. I thought, I thought it's more accessible restrooms there, but I could, yeah, I could be wrong.
I wrote a letter back to Andrew, who was there and never heard anything back, but it's really hard. I tried with my chair. There are no automatic door openers and it's, it needs a lot of work.
At the new pool?
At the new pool. Am I right, Samora?
Yes, man, right.
Oh, that's awful.
Okay, well, yeah, we will, yeah. We will put that on the agenda for the Accessibility Committee too. And yeah, if you could send, send us information and we can maybe work on that together.
Absolutely. I'll send you an email, Davy, and then Dr. Lewis has information as well.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it seems like a letter from the whole commission led by Davy to the mayor, since he was Disability Commission Chair for years.
Yeah, that seems like a big oversight.
I mean, that is a serious, I mean, and you know Steve, he would, he would be on it like, you know what? I mean, it's just like, I think he would be on it. I can't imagine any change.
Do you know if there's like a single user in there or no? They didn't have anything. Did you notice, did you notice if they had a single user, like a family restroom? That was separate from the...
There isn't one and the single user is so narrow. There's no way for a wheelchair to turn around in there.
So they didn't give it... That's awful.
Okay, well, we will, we will definitely work on that as a, as a commission because that's not an acceptable thing for a new pool not to have an accessible restroom and changing room.
Another thing to think about, and I don't, I don't want us to become the, the police in going around finding neglect, although I think that that's part of our responsibility as well. So it's kind of a gray area. But do we know if there's any other neglect in terms of ADA complacency within the building? Just because if that is the location of where we are holding meetings, I don't know the image or the optic of holding meetings as a commission in a place that is not fully accessible. I think, from what I've experienced or seen, other accessibility options are plentiful, but that's a real big glaring one that kind of, well, Samora brought it up yesterday, and I mean, it kind of stood out to me of, is there other things that they've neglected? But we're still, I don't want to say we're endorsing it because we're holding our meetings there, but...
Well, I can speak as a frequent user and it's completely accessible except for it's... except for it sounds like the new one didn't get taken care of. And I know for me that Carolyn, if you don't want to call Steve, I will call him first thing in the morning and say, this has got to get fixed. I mean, that's awful.
Yeah.
There was one, but Noah really worked on this and some of us, other ones, some, the other people did too. The door leading into, on the other end of the community center, right by the senior center, was Noah's.
Oh, right. I remember that, right?
They fixed that now.
They fixed it. Well, thank God.
To get in there. And other than that, I can't think of anything.
I mean, really, it's always been good.
Yeah, the bathrooms.
I think this is just a, I mean, how long has that pool been there now? Six months?
Oh, more than a year.
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, we're talking about the pool, right, Carolyn and Samara?
Oh, I thought, so I asked about the building in general.
Uh.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it just brought up a bigger, and we can probably really table this within the specific committee, but it just brought up a bigger question of, you know, if something that big, and let's be honest, if, if COVID was not happening right now, there would be a lot of people out there and there would be a lot of people that wouldn't be able to fully use that space because of that neglect. And so it just made me think of that entire space that we're meeting at. Is there other aspects that we have seen or just hasn't really been addressed? But again, that could be a bigger conversation for later.
Yeah.
So, so it's both the pool and the center is what you're saying we should look at?
Well, I, I can personally say that every single aspect of a center has always been accessible. I mean, the bathrooms and I think it's all over the building and, I mean, having used most of them and, and the hallways and the doorways, except for the one that Carolyn was talking about that got fixed. I mean, even, it's been like a hundred percent.
That's one of these things I would think it'd be good to just go through and see if there are other places that are problematic now, because.
Well, not in the community center. I mean, anybody's welcome to spend their time, but, you know, I can say for sure that.
Well, you, I think you said something about getting up and downstairs to the track area, or somebody told me that was a problem.
But, well, I never, I, I know that they have an elevator though.
Sorry, yeah, I think, I think this is something that we can continue to address with.
Right, exactly, later. Now, is there a pool in the community center now?
We're running a little short on time, so I'd like to.
Right, okay, right.
Move us along.
We stopped tracking about that, right?
So, um, yeah, I think that, that is something that the accessibility committee in general has, uh, has been involved in is if a building or a place isn't accessible to, to move towards, uh, helping them become more accessible and I think looking at that pool is something we can add to our list and also work with people who have already worked on the issue, uh, together in conjunction.
Excuse, excuse me, Davy, can I make a quick comment? Um, and Sly is correct, and I want to just say, this is a, this is a slight thing, but let's be honest, guys, nothing will ever be totally accessible. Right? So our language should be more accessible. For example, the community center might be accessible for, totally, but for me, I would love to see some Braille in there somewhere in their literature and that kind of thing. You understand what I'm saying? So nothing will ever probably totally ever be fully accessible. Our goal is to make it more accessible as we can.
Absolutely.
Yeah, like I thought there ought to be handrails, for example, so you can know where you are by holding onto a handrail and, you know, that's never going to happen.
All right, yeah, I completely, completely agree. Um, so, okay, so the next, um, and I'm just gonna take a look here and see what we need to prioritize, uh, because I think we have another you know, forty minutes worth of meeting, but we only have twenty minutes.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to shorten our intros in the future.
I often, I often think maybe, yeah, maybe we should just say our names.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, uh, I think one thing that we can probably agree on pretty quickly is, uh, just to go ahead and, but uh, Steve, Mayor, Mayor Patterson, know that we have two people on the commission that haven't been participating. Uh, Preston has specifically stated that he's no longer interested in serving. Um, and then Robin just hasn't been in contact, Robin Briganti, so, um, I, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion just to, you know, thank them for their service and to let them know that if they would like to rejoin or like to come back, uh, just to let us know and, and that kind of thing. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Was that a motion, Davy, or?
Yeah, yeah.
I second.
Okay, so it's a motion, just to put it in clearer language, it would be a motion that we, uh, thank, uh, both Preston and Robin for their years of commitment and, or for, for Robin, it's for years of commitment. For Preston, he was, uh, appointed but never really participated. So it would just be, you know, thanking them for participating and, uh, letting them know that the door is open for committee work or for commission work in the future. So do I have a motion for that?
Well, you made it. It's a second, so let's just vote.
Yeah, second and vote.
Okay, great. So everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? Any nays? Okay, motion carries. Um, let's go ahead and move down to, um, publicizing meetings and using Zoom. Uh, Carolyn and Diane have been pretty active, uh, and trying to figure this out and how to make it work. Um, Diana, Carolyn, do you want to lead the discussion on that?
We, we actually don't have a discussion. We, we're gonna meet with Tricia tomorrow morning, because this is, that's the first time she had available. And we'll just get clarity and then we'll let people know at the next meeting.
Yeah, the issue is the city is requiring, according to Patty, uh, to be the host of the Zoom meetings for all commissions. So we just need clarity on what that means, committees or whatever. So we need clarity.
I see.
Yeah, and if it means commissions or committee meetings, or if it's just Zoom meetings, is it other meetings? So it's not clear what it is they're asking for exactly.
Okay, well, thank you, though.
Let people know. We, yeah.
And, and, and Diana mentioned this in the last meeting, but just to, uh, you know, she had something, uh, publicize, uh, Carolyn and Diane and Noah and I, but mostly Karen, I think Carolyn and Diane have been working on just, you know, making sure that we let people know how to request accommodations and, um, you know, letting, letting people know, letting the public know in some way when our committee meetings are. But we will have more information for you soon on that.
And don't forget committee meetings, we need to know at least, and we can advance so we can publicize.
Right. Um, so I, I wanted to have a really, yeah, I want to have a discussion about, um, I think for, for me and the work that I do as a disability activist, um, to move on to the next, uh, agenda point is, uh, I think it's really important that we acknowledge our intersectionality with other, with other groups, especially other groups who have been historically marginalized and are also uh, standing up for rights and standing up against, um, you know, a lot of oppression and, and racism and ableism that, that, you know, and how, how the, how these things intersect for, for all of us. Um, so a question that I have is what, what I would like to do is I'd like to issue a statement from the City Commission on Disabilities, just sa- saying some of those things and saying that, you know, we, we support the Black Lives Matter movement and, um, you know, we recognize how, how this intersects with disability, that people with disabilities are also um, often, you know, unfairly targeted by, by law enforcement and ways because of implicit bias and because of bias in general. Um, so I, I feel like it's important for, for everyone and every organization to kind of stand up and, and make a statement like that right now. Um, so my, my motion would be that the executive committee, along with, uh, communications and advocacy, would work together to uh, craft a statement that we would, uh, share on social media. Do, do we have any, uh, discussion on that or thoughts on, you know, where other people are at in that statement?
Well, if this is a motion, I'll second it to talk about.
Okay.
Um, I, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's, I mean, I, 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 I really appreciate the sentiment and I think it's a very heartfelt. I think it's, it can be complex, um, because you don't want to be viewed as sort of jumping on the bandwagon. And, and there are a lot of complex issues involved. But I, I do hear your sincere sentiment, Davy.
And I feel the same way. And of course, the word that comes to mind with me is inequality. You know, the, the idea that people have, um, unequal access to the, you know, really to the world, right? And, but to opportunities, et cetera. And that's what we share in common with others.
Davy, you had, I'm sorry, you had a statistic that fifty percent of police killings are of people with disabilities.
Right.
That to me is the headline for whatever we do, if we do decide to do something.
And I'll be, I'll be honest with you, as my role within the college of business, it's been my job to draft two different versions of a similar, similar letter. One on behalf of the college and the other behalf of myself and my identity as a black man, also as an agent of the university. And I, I, I say that because context matters. And so the two letters were very different. One for the college was supporting social justice and equity. My letter was condemning violence based upon difference. And so I think if you word it correctly, it won't be viewed or framed as in vogue or jumping on the bandwagon as unfortunately, some of the business responses have been deemed as. So any assistance I can give, because I think also with that, silence is a form of communication as well. And so for those that look at this committee, this commission for leadership, and they do not see that voice here in Athens, then it sends a unsaid message to the community. And that doesn't reflect upon our values, our morals, our, our ethics. So I think it's a good, I think it's a good time, anytime is always a good time to stand against injustice. And so that's, that's my opinion.
Right. But I think Dr. Lewis is right, though, that if we do this, that we should contextualize it around as much differently abledness as is possible. Since there seems to be ample, uh, evidence of such. And that in itself will send the message of our solidarity and support, I think.
Okay, so, yeah, any?
The wording could be tricky.
What, was that?
The wording could be tricky.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
On about this, the wording could be tricky.
But, but we could do it. We could do it. If we want to do it.
All right, I think, I think it sounds like we have pretty much a consensus, consensus, um, that we can go ahead and work on it and send it out, um.
Yeah.
To the membership and, and, um, especially of those, uh, three committees and then send it out to the entire group and see, um, you know, if we have a consensus around it. Does anyone want to take, I guess, as, as like the crafter of the letter, I could like just put out some bullet points, but.
Yeah, how do you feel, Sly, about starting it? Or what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Lord knows.
You started.
If I'm not, if I'm not working on college of business business, I'm writing my dissertation, so.
You have nothing else to do, right?
That's what I do.
I was gonna say, add a third thing, right?
I fully, uh, will work with anybody in drafting a letter.
Yeah, you started.
Get everybody's thoughts on it. So yeah, David, if you want to send me bullet points, I can easily start to generalize, generalize in the form of a paragraph and some language and make sure it's neutral in tone, but very impactful as well.
Right.
Excellent, okay. So I make, I make a motion that.
I think Carolyn also had some bullet points she might want to send too.
Okay, great.
Would be helpful.
Carolyn always has bullet points. Good ones, good ones.
And I just want, I just want to acknowledge just how, how incredibly smart, um, every, like everyone on this commission is. It's just so great to work with everyone. And I just feel like, o- often just kind of like inadequate in terms of like, you know, what I, what I'm able to.
No, you're good.
Like whatever, whatever everyone, everyone else is such a better writer.
We're better together, that's right.
Yeah, better together for sure. It's just great what we put out recently. Um, okay, so, uh, can we go and have, is there a second for that motion?
I think.
I already seconded, uh, the motion in general, so.
Great.
If, if, if there's a friendly amendment to like have Sly draft something, I'm on board with that too.
So, uh, how, how I would read the, uh, the motion is, uh, for, for, for me, Davy, to send out some bullet points and for Carolyn to, uh, send out some bullet points as well. For Sly to put together a paragraph, it would work, and exec, um, advocacy and communications to, to kind of fi- finalize it and send out to membership for a final like yes, no vote. Um, does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, all, all in favor? All right.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, everyone. Um, I'm gonna, I, I would like to just kind of get with the communications committee about the personal profiles and send that on to them so that they can, you know, just kind of better get a sense of what. Here, I, I have a quick question for my, yeah?
Uh, can you send mom that picture of?
Hello?
I will. Love you, bye bye. Kids are getting picked up. Um, so, uh, okay, what was I just saying? Um, oh, for personal profiles and to, to highlight some of the members of our commission, I'll send that on to communications and they can kind of think about what works and what doesn't work with that. So we could, you know, just kind of share what our work is a little bit more. And then.
So are you, wait, are you sending the form to all of us and we fill it out and send it on to the communication committee?
I, I'm just gonna work with the communication committee on, on mine to start off. And then make sure that we have a form and then, yeah, because I don't want to just like put something out that, then we change later on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
David, who, who in the communication committee will be getting all this information?
Everyone using communication.
I mean, I'm on the commu- communications committee, but I'm not sure, you know, where my status is.
You'll probably send it to me, Rose, and then.
Oh, okay. Oh, excellent. You, I, I, I didn't realize you were the communication committee. Yay, but everything's getting done then.
Well, it's me right now, it's me, you, Arian and, uh, Claire.
Yeah, you have, you have support now, Rose. It's not just, not just you doing.
Oh, I, I, I know that, but I didn't know who was in charge of getting this information from you.
Right now is the point person.
Well, it's good, it's good news that it's not me.
Thank you, thank you, Rose. Um, so the next point in the agenda is I'm going to go ahead and table the OSOC board updates again. Um, I think people generally know where that's going and hopefully that will have uh, some, so services, um, sometime in the next, um, like start, starting maybe in three years from now. So we're still making progress on that. Um, let's move down to committee reports for executive. Uh, we got the letter to the editor. Thanks a lot for everyone's input. I thought it was great, really cut to the point on wearing, wearing masks and, you know, also why it's hard for some people to wear masks as well. Um, I just want to, just, just like Carolyn already said, getting committee reports and agendas out in a timely manner. Um, so that we're able to, to share those with the rest of the commission and also beforehand. Um, and yeah, we'll have more information about, uh, sunshine law. Um, now I have you down as, uh, giving a little update about what you're working on with Paul. Do you want to provide that update, Noah? You're still on mute right now. I can't hear anyone.
Me neither.
Okay, okay, so I don't, I don't think Noah is on right now. Okay, okay, so I don't I don't think Noah is on right now. Okay.
He wrote in chat, he's starting working with Paul again. I'll be on this. I will be all something the city with him.
Okay. All right, sounds good, Noah, thank you. And then we can go ahead and go on down to the Accessibility and Mobility Committee. We did a walk and roll with Rob. Uh, Diane, Diane, do you want to fill people in on what we worked on?
Sure. So Rob was in town with his phone and we were a small group, but mighty, looking at everything to try to say what looked accessible or what we might take pictures of or concepts to give the city for the projects they're doing in the area that goes between, um, kind of up near Passion Works and Donato's up towards Casa, those intersections in the sidewalks, and then over around, um, up to past Casa over this across the street, so that kind of whole little area there.
Are you mean Domino's or?
Yeah, did I say the.
Not, yeah.
Yeah, Domino's, sorry. I don't, yeah, um.
We really tried to edit with like a fine tooth comb, like we looked at every single curb cut, every single crack in the sidewalk, we were taking pictures, so. How how to make some buildings more accessible, how to make crosswalks more accessible.
I tried to join that meeting, but Zoom just wouldn't let me. It kept saying I had to download something and that was crazy.
Oh, bummer.
So I was trying.
I believe it. Yeah, it was good. I think we we got some good data. We still need to summarize it all, so. To get something for the city.
Yeah, absolutely. And our next walk and roll is going to be July ninth at noon. So if anyone would like to join us, and JW, if you want to maybe.
Yeah, just remind me, yeah, I'll try it again.
That would be great if you're able to make it. Um, and then for Communications, uh, do you want to go ahead and work us through Communications, Carolyn and Claire?
Uh, just briefly, the, uh, letters to the editor this month will be Noah, and we're trying to write letters based on personal experience with disability, and he's working on that. And Claire is going to be doing the letter to the editor. So we're going to try to get one of those in at least each month, at least. But if something comes up and you want to write a letter or an article, Arian is the point person, let her know. And she's also going to be thinking about, um, column ideas as well. July will be Barry, since that's the ADA anniversary on July, signing on July twenty sixth. And she's got some personal things about her sister and also will fold in the ADA as well. And, uh, Rose will continue as the liaison for for Facebook and Claire and, let me see, and Diane and I have been also been added on as editors so that we can add information. And Claire is going to be working on placing more articles, videos and all that on Facebook and on our commission site.
Great.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I I think that probably kind of, is there anything else that you'd like to add for Communications?
Oh, I don't think so. Did I miss anything, Claire, Rose, or Arian?
You said something about writing something, putting it out regarding the, um, Crip, uh, Crip camp.
Yeah, we did that. It's out. We sent it to our contact list. And also it's on Facebook, uh, sent to Scott to be on our site, and so it's it's out. Thank you for that reminder. So as we get videos and different articles, we'll post them to Facebook and send to Rose to post to Facebook, and we've got a good system now, don't we, Rose?
Finally.
And also to our our site and to the newspapers and the media when.
Yeah, thank you.
I I noticed on the site that it was the first thing that was listed, and I wondered if it could, if we could ask Patricia to say announcements or or something, because it was all melded in with the regular commission stuff, but it wasn't separated out as being different. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So if you make a note, let's ask her about that tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, and then, uh, then we'll do our last. Well, actually, we have education outreach, um, and also advocacy. Um, for Barry and Carolyn, is there anything up? And I I would like to just make a motion to extend this meeting for another like five, five or six or seven minutes. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure, second.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Paige. Is that all right? Okay, um, so if you, uh, if I could, okay, so let's move on to Education Outreach, and I finally made made the right heading for that. Do you want to give it back to Carolyn, David?
Well, Barry and I can incur that we've got the shortest committee report ever. We haven't met yet. We'll meet in July.
Okay.
And we have a lot to deal with in July.
Yes.
Yeah.
About the AP stuff.
And then I'm off. So moving on to advocacy, uh, Sly and Noah, do you want to give an update? I understood that you either met yesterday or you sat in medium?
Yeah, so now I'll summarize it pretty briefly. Um, apologies to Professor Smith because I.
The great first advocacy meeting period.
What?
I just want to say that's why hell the great first advocacy meeting period.
Gotcha.
Thank you, brother. Want to give apologies to Professor Smith because, um, there was a lot of, um, Zoom links in terms of regulation, in terms of it being recorded and not on Microsoft Teams. So Noah helped out tremendously in making sure that we had the proper link. Um, but your email got left off, Professor Smith, and so that's why you weren't part of the meeting yesterday, and so because.
That's why I was so cold.
No, so because of that, you were you were with us in spirit, and as we talked about, uh, duties and responsibilities for the committee, we tabled that discussion because we wanted you to have full opportunity to volunteer for one of the office as well. But we had a great conversation on duties, responsibilities and goals. Um, we, I I will, David, I'll touch base with you later about requesting some language about specific roles within the committees to send out, so people can look it over, give their opinion if they want to volunteer, and then we will hold an emergency meeting to take suggestions, um, and go from there. But it was a lot of good energy and we met for about a good hour or so. So a lot of good energy and a lot of clarification that we clarified, and I think we got a good start.
Great. Awesome. I'm just so excited that we have all of our committees fully functioning now, so that's that's just awesome. Thanks. Thanks for getting that started and, um, I'm really excited to to all work together on on doing more advocacy. Um, so the final thing that I have before we adjourn is to go ahead. We we basically have, uh, as an Executive Committee, formalized the process of, uh, commission membership now. So instead of, you know, just, you know, Mayor Patterson just making a recommendation or one of us saying, hey, this person might be good, what we've decided to do is to invite people to be on committees and then through committee work, uh, you know, invite people to join commission meetings, full commission meetings, see how it works, uh, what they're able to add to the table. Um, and then after that, have a full commission vote, just to say like, yeah, this person's great. Or, well, we saw these questions about the person, and then make that recommendation to to Mayor Patterson afterwards to make the appointment. So, um, it's more of a formalized process now. And, um, as part of that process, we will ask you to to disappear. But first of all, is there any other announcements before, uh, before we do that? Arian?
Yeah, real quick, um, the City Council was presented with a proposal on extending the use of the sidewalk to take, uh, take over parts of, uh, a few parking spots to develop what's called parklets. Uh, this is for some businesses uptown to be able to extend their seating out now that we have social distancing. Uh, and I learned that, uh, the Disability Commission had not had a chance to review that prior to coming to council. So I, um, but, uh, the Accessibility Committee, I believe, has since reviewed that, and I just want to extend a thank you to everyone who did that on such short notice. Um, recommendations that were provided have been incorporated into the the plan. It's now considered a pilot. Um, and, uh, those that weren't adopted into the pilot, uh, they're now, they're still aware of, and they'll just keep an eye on and make sure, uh, that those areas, um, don't become problematic. So I just wanted to share that, that thank you to everyone who did that quickly.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ari. And we were able to squeeze it in on our, um, on our walk and roll, and we really appreciate you reaching out and getting that information to us. We can, we can send, Diane actually compiled that and wrote it. So Diane, would you mind just, uh, maybe as part of the meeting minutes, just attaching that so you can show like what what our recommendations were to the. Cool.
Sure, I can do that.
Uh, Davey, I don't have a an announcement, but how are we doing with keeping our deaf and hard of hearing brothers and sisters involved? I mean, are they losing out on this kind of format? Are we staying staying on top of this?
Yeah, one thing that we are doing is we're making sure to have ASL interpreter at every, um, at every meeting or every full commission meeting, because it is publicly broadcast, we want to make sure that people know what's happening. So so Paige is on the call today and interpreting for us. Um, Cheryl said the Cheryl, who's, uh, one of our commissioners, he's part of the deaf community, uh, said that she was gonna, she doesn't have great home internet, so she was gonna drive to the library tonight and try and get set up there, but I don't.
Okay.
See her here, and I also haven't had a chance to check my email beforehand to see if there was something that happened, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, good valid point, JW. Is there, how how are we doing in terms of, uh, visual?
We're fine. I mean, it's fine right now, you know, it's, uh, this is, this is, yeah, this this is actually good in in a lot of ways.
Yeah, I I agree. Like, for me, it's like, it's easier in some ways, but it's harder in other ways. Like, I'd like to see everyone in person.
Right.
Okay, um, so Claire, at this point, whenever we vote on a new commission member, we ask that they leave the room. Since you can't leave the room, we'll just ask that you log off for a minute. Of course, this will be broadcast on on the channel anyways, you can always watch it, so.
All right, so no name calling.
Go into executive session, but I don't know how I do that all of a sudden.
Right.
We would have to thought about that in advance. We, I didn't think about it. Uh, yeah.
Well, I I will say, if you want to know in the future, if you want to do that in the future, um, the way.
They got all these rooms now, yeah.
Yeah, the the way they did that in for council is they had a separate.
Yeah.
Zoom link.
Yep.
So we actually logged off this one, for example, opened up a new one.
Yep.
Close that and then revisit and then came back to the original link. So that's how they did it.
Great. Oh, so it wasn't recorded?
Executive session was not recorded. It was still, uh, private as it would be if you were in person, but we were all still virtual.
I wonder if we should do that, because I don't know that you would normally do voting so everyone can.
You can't vote in executive session. You can only do discussion.
Right.
Right.
I think this is fine.
Yeah, I think.
I think this is fine.
Can she text me, like, um, will I need to get back on, will I need to get back on the call?
I I don't think so. I think we'll be.
Right.
Yeah, I was just sharing just for future reference, and I don't think we necessarily need to do that for this particular vote.
Claire, so you will know, uh, the, we vote, it goes to the mayor and then the council, and then the mayor will send you, uh, an appointment letter, should that be sent.
Right.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Claire.
Have a good week.
You too.
Thank you.
Hey, Davey, it's, uh, Brian from the government channel. Did you want to continue the broadcast? Or were you talking about stopping something? I'm sorry, I'm trying to listen in here.
Hey, I don't think we really need to. I don't think this is like anything that we need to go in executive session for. We just in the past, we've asked people to step outside, talking about them in front of them. Uh, but, yeah, I think.
I wonder, though, if, like, I think my guess is that it will be pretty unanimous around Claire, but if there were other people, we might be setting a precedent that we don't necessarily want to do.
Yeah, um, so so I think, yeah, in the future, we should definitely, for for this type of discussion, kind of log off and log back on, but.
Well, now that we know that's possible, I I think you're right, Diane, but now that we know how that possible that is, I think that's something we definitely need to be pay attention to in the future.
Yeah.
Those different rooms we can go to in exec, these kind of sessions.
Yeah, thank you, Adam, thank you. Um, so, yeah, I'd like to just go and make.
I'd agree.
Okay, I'd like to just make an emo- a motion to to approve, uh, Claire, to recommend Claire as a commission member, and I think she's just done really tremendous work, um, from helping out with, um, you know, the Outreach and Education Committee over the past year and a half to, yeah, just adds a lot of skills and good, you know, HR or good public relations, uh, dimension to our commission. So, yeah, I would make that motion that we.
I second.
I third.
Just say, Claire, um, Claire is turning in her resume, and we have her membership application completed. She sent three references. I checked, I checked, I was checking two, I've only heard back from one. Diane checked one, and both are just glowing, uh, saying we would, she would be a great asset, and, um, nothing to give a red flag.
Great. All right.
Time to vote.
All right, let's vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, any names? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Yay.
And with that, uh, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to, and congratulations, we can, uh, do you care to send out the texts then, Carolyn, to Claire?
Uh, we can't say anything yet.
No, of course, we got to go through the process, that's right. Yeah, it's got to go through.
The mayor has to.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Send everything to the mayor and then he can follow up.
Right, that's a good point, good point.
Okay, so so we'll, as the executive team, go ahead and make, send that recommendation over to the mayor then, and they'll work from there.
And and if the ma- once the mayor approves her, then I think it'd be appropriate to put it unusually sound.
Yeah, I I would like to do that.
Does the City Council need to approve it before, after the mayor or before the mayor?
Yeah, council, does the final.
Final approval. So the mayor forwards it to the council.
I, I'm sorry, I I don't mean to interrupt, but I have to stop now because I can't.
No, I got you. I hear you, Paige. Oh, that's right. Good Lord. Bless her heart.
No, the the council doesn't approve us. The the mayor appoints us, and that's it.
No, it goes to council.
After appointment?
The the recommendation goes to the mayor, and then he sends it on to council, and he makes the appointment letter.
Okay, because I, because all I got was an appointment letter, and I had no idea that the council was involved, too. Oh, well.
Okay, so let's, I go ahead and make a motion to, uh, to the meeting. Thank you very much.
Second, let's go.
Let's go.
Aye.
Bye, guys, I loved it. It's good.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Really appreciate everyone.
Okay.
Take care.